Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. Our invocation and that will be given by our former councilman, Louis Tonsmyer Senior. Could please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray for this nation, this community, and for the leadership of the city and county. Our help is in the name of the Lord, the Maker of heaven and earth. Give strength to those who are public servants. Protect all those whose jobs are dangerous. We ask for the Spirit of truth, unity, and justice to guide those who gather to form plans and to make decisions. Give us the Spirit of gratitude and thanksgiving. All this we ask for your honor and glory. Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your public which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Holton Roll, please.
Terry Hines, Ward 1.
Here.
J. Steph, Ward 2. Terry Rock, Ward 3.
President.
Calvick Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Seth Brin, Ward 6.
Thank you, Meredith. Our first order of business, and thank you, Councilman Tonsmyer. It's an honor to have you with us, and thank you for starting us off like that this evening. Always a pleasure.
Thank you.
We have a series of public hearings tonight. We'll start with case file AZ-18. Excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself. We haven't approved the minutes yet, have we?
No.
No, we have not.
No.
Yes. This is my first time up here. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our August 16th meeting. And council, you've had these, had an opportunity to review these minutes and have an opportunity now to make any edits, or if there are none, a motion will be in order.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, we've got case file AZ-18-02. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started with that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, this is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. The request was for the property located at 539 Roland Springs Road at the corner with Corinth Road. The applicant is looking to rezone an existing duplex and annex it into the city as MF-14. With that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this particular property condition to it either being single-family or duplex. Again, with that, we have to do the separate public hearing for annexation versus the zoning.
Okay. Any questions for Randy on this item right now? Thank you. Randy, I'll open up a public hearing for the zoning portion of this request, AZ-18-02. And anybody wishing to step forward and to speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the zoning portion of the request. I'll open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of request AZ-18-02. And once again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close that public hearing, and we'll turn it over to council for final consideration. We'll first take up the annexation portion of the request for AZ-18-02. Is there any discussion on that item? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. And now, the zoning portion of the request. Any discussion on that? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Manino, we have SU-18-04, please.
Thank you again. This is a second reading, as noted, and this is a special use permit request by Calvary Chapel River Oaks Church. They're looking to locate in Cartersville Plaza Shopping Center with our zoning ordinance requirements. A religious institute going into general commercial does require a request for special use. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application, and again, this is a second reading.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Manino at this point? Thank you, sir. And I'll open up a public hearing for case SU-18-04 and ask anybody who would care to step forward to speak for or against, they may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for SU-18-04 and turn it over to council for consideration. Any discussion on the item? If not, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I'm now going to open up a public hearing relative to an amendment regarding occupation tax and business licenses. And I see, Mr. Manino, you're up to speak as part of this public hearing, so go right ahead.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and Council. As you had noted, we're looking to amend the ordinance dealing with occupational tax, license, and business license and permit fees. With that, we're looking to automate our process, so you can go online and pay fees. Now, right now, you have to either come to our office and pay by credit card, or you will have to mail it in. With that, the fee structure will still remain the same. The base fees for all our processes, our permits, stay the same. Business license stay the same. Occupational tax stay the same. But there will be a 2.95% charge for the credit card transaction. That will be passed on to the customer. In many instances, we're already charging $3.95, a flat fee for credit card transactions. We'll be using the services of Invoice Cloud, and with that, we do recommend approval. Again, I know this is just a public hearing. The next item will be actual discussion on the ordinance amendment, but it'll be the exact same discussion. With that, we do recommend approval of the proposed ordinance. And if you want to open it up, see if anybody else is interested in this public hearing, I'll come back and finish.
Thank you for your guidance on how to run a public hearing, Randy.
Boy, I'm all three.
All right, so this is a public hearing relative to that occupational tax and business license amendment. Anybody else wishing to step forward and speak on the matter is welcome to do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close that public hearing and turn it back over to Randy.
Thank you again. The next item is the actual ordinance amendment for this. Keith may want to jump in. He actually wrote the text to go along with our current fee structure.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We have, we, again, the fees will not change, but the actual service fees for utilizing either a bank transaction or a credit card transaction will be included as part of the user fee. So with that, we do recommend approval for this. And again, I know this is only a first reading. We have to go through another reading on this.
Thank you, Mr. Manino. Mr. Lovell, do you have anything to add to that?
Basically, Mayor, this item and the next item deal with the processing of credit and debit cards, and also processing of online transactions from the city's web portals. And we're basically cleaning up the ordinances and codifying the credit card processing fees that are charged by the vendors that provide these services for the city. This particular one deals with all the fees that are assessed by the Planning and Development Department, including occupation licenses and building permits, zoning applications, and historic preservation applications, whatever a customer might want to pay via credit card. It will be, it is recommended for your approval, and I'll address the next one when we get there.
Okay. Obviously, this is the first read, do we vote?
Yes, this is the first reading.
So we don't vote on that this evening. But I do want to, I do want to commend you for taking the step and getting this put in place. I know administratively, it's got to be difficult every year when people come in and pay the occupational tax, and certainly a lot of businesses. It's a transaction that could very well be handled online and make it work.
All right, and being able to let the customer or the citizens go online and do some of the business, it'd be a lot easier for them.
Absolutely. So applaud you making efforts and strides in that direction. So, yes, if there's no other questions or discussion, if you move on to the next item, please.
The next one is basically doing the exact same thing, but for various other fees the city charges. It's allowing for the processing of credit and debit cards and online transactions for garbage, municipal court fines, and recreation department, and then a general catch-all for any other services that we have that will allow for credit card processing. The fees are different for each one because a different vendor provides that services. A lot of time, that's tied to the software the particular department has, is using for the processing of their permits and applications. Like, the recreation department has its own unique software for children to enroll and adults to enroll in all the events and all. And so tied in with that software is a different fee structure than is used by the other companies to interrelate with that. Same thing with municipal court. It's entirely separate from all the other city funds. They have their own website and own vendors that they use to allow people to pay their fines online, so they don't have to actually come to court for minor traffic offenses if they don't want to. Garbage and the other fees are done by the general city provider, which, as Randy mentioned to y'all, is a $3.95 fee per transaction. That includes all the utilities, garbage, and any other services the city may develop as time goes along.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion on that? All right, and again, that was the first reading, and we'll take that up for final consideration in our next meeting. Randy, I think it's time for you to get back up to talk about the vendor we're going to use for some of these once we get it put in place.
Yes, the vendor's going to be Invoice Cloud for the transaction of the credit card, debit card fees and so forth. With that, we need to get an agreement in place with Invoice Cloud to coordinate with our software vendor, City View, who's putting in place the, the structure for the business license and permits to be able to be done online. To do that, we're requesting that council authorize the mayor to sign this agreement, even though the ordinance won't be amended till after the second reading. That'll give us a couple of extra weeks to start working on the software and make sure everything is working correctly before we go live with it for the fee payment structure. If for some reason that ordinance is not amended and y'all choose not to do so, that agreement would be null and void.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Randy on that item? Thank you. Chair, we entertain a motion if there's no discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, you've got the next couple items, please. We're going to take one step off the track, and then we're going to jump back on the track as it relates to I, Invoice Cloud. But we're going to talk about budget amendment for FY-1819, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, the Fire Department has requested to amend the fiscal year 2019 budget due to some unforeseen expenses. This is a result from the Bartow County EMS making some changes. They are asking, they being the Fire, our Fire Department, is asking for an additional $38,405 for half the year. This will be offset by increasing the local office sales tax by that same dollar amount. This is the first reading of that amendment to the ordinance.
Okay. Any questions for Tom on this? And again, just want to restate, this was an action that we've got to take because the, with the Bartow EMS going away, there's certain personnel that we need to have in place that obviously we didn't budget for because of the timing of when that decision was made on EMS.
Correct.
So, thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right, no vote on that item? We will move back to talk about the Invoice Cloud agreement, please, Tom.
Yes, sir. This is the third and hopefully the final time we'll hear about the Invoice Cloud for the mayor. We currently use in the cashier area PayPal to settle our credit card and debit card transactions. We also use Invoice Cloud in the customer service area for the online transactions. At the time that we contracted with Invoice Cloud, they were having an issue with the interface processing of the, well, the interface of Cogstal, which is our software billing service. Since then, we have, we now have been notified the Invoice Cloud has got the interface issue resolved, and I'm asking for your council permission for you as mayor to count, to sign the contract to bring the Invoice Cloud portion into the cashier area where you take payments over the counter. I will note that the, like I said, the Invoice Cloud now does integrate with the Cogstal system, has been very smooth. We've been using it for about three years. It's very friendly. We've had very few, if any complaints at all over the, when we made the switch to Invoice Cloud.
Great.
So I do recommend that the approval for the council to give you permission to sign the existing contract for that to be made.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for Tom on this item? And if there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Chief Carter, you've got the next item, please.
Good evening, and thank you. Respectfully, request permission for the mayor to be authorized to sign our annual agreement. It's a maintenance agreement with USA Water for the testing and treatment of the water that is in the public safety chiller. This is a joint agreement for the Fire Department and the Police Department. It is budgeted. Total amount is $4,260, $177.50 per department per month.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Chief, Mr. Porter, you've got the next three, sir.
Yes, Mayor and Council. First item is water line materials for the airport. The airport is looking to put some additional water line around the new hangars at Phoenix Air. They're adding a third hangar over there to the east side, and need to add a water line around those facilities. The cost to do that is around $100,000. They're asking the airport authorities, ask the city to, and the county, to contribute towards the material costs, which is about $36,000. Request that city council approve $18,000, which is 50% of the material cost, to go towards this project for the airport.
Any discussion?
And that water line is for the fire line, correct?
That is, yes.
Okay.
And I came in late for the discussion. It's not budgeted. Where's it coming from?
It'll come out of the general fund.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Chair, we entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Dan.
Next item is fiber optic cable and supplies. A few months ago, the city council did approve agreement to hire NCI and local buyers to engineering for a new fiber line up to the Nutellas Museum. We've got GDOT approval of the engineering plans. Now, the next step is for us to order the supplies, fiber optic equipment, to make that start installation. The cost of the materials is $16,780. This was an unbudgeted item, as I recall, letting you know, but we do anticipate about a four-year payback or less on this project once we get everything up and running.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Final item for you, Dan, please.
Yes, sir. The Affordable Care Act reporting annually. We have to report this to the federal government. This is the cost we've been doing for the last couple of years. Shaw Hankins provides a service to calculate these fees for us and sends out the required notices to our employees. The cost for 2017 is $5,297.50, and I recommend approval of this.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dan. Mr. Hasselbruck, you've got a purchase to make.
Yes, Mayor and Council, good afternoon. The Electric Department would like to purchase a Yanmar excavator to replace a 20-year-old backhoe that, that's starting to wear out. And we want, we specified a Yanmar because we already own a couple of pieces of Yanmar equipment, and we've invested over $40,000 in special attachment, hydraulic attachments that we can interchange, that are interchangeable between these other pieces of equipment. And this, these, these attachments allow us to, our equipment becomes much more versatile with, it can have more functions with these attachments. So we wanted to stay with Yanmar because of this advantage that we have with the equipment we already have purchased. And we put this on statewide bid, and we've got, we've got five bids back on it, and we were asking council to approve the purchase of the Yanmar from Vermeer Marietta, which is the low-cost bidder for $74,000.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Mayor?
Oh, yes.
I had one question.
Right ahead.
Just out of simple curiosity. With this being one of our first bids, we put out on the statewide bid, did we get different bidders than we normally would, or the same?
Yes, we've got, we've got different bidders.
We did get some different?
This is the second time the Electric Department's gone statewide bid, so.
Okay.
So, and we're about to do another one also, but we did get, I don't even know where Conley, Georgia is, but we got one bidder out of Conley, Georgia.
Okay.
And another out of Marietta that we've never heard from before, so.
So we are getting?
There are people paying attention to it, so, yeah.
I was just curious. Good question. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion?
Well, the, I have a question. Will the New Holland, will that go to surplus, or will you just keep it till it dies?
We're, understand that Parks and Rec may, may would like this piece of equipment and...
It may end up on one of your baseball fields. You have to deal with it, Greg.
If, if we don't have a take or for within the city, we'll, we'll take it to an auction.
Okay. Thank you. If there's any other discussion, that'd be the time, and if not, a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'd like to ask your approval to purchase a backup pump for our Brown Farm Road sewer lift station. The lift station was rebuilt in 2014, and in the scope of that project, only the pumps that are active in the station were purchased. This being a critical piece of infrastructure for the west side of town, we would like the, I guess, the comfort of knowing that we have a backup pump sitting on the shelf ready to go should we have a failure in that station. Additionally, this pump can serve as a backup to our waste pump in the wastewater plant, which serves critical function daily in that plant, so it, it actually will do double duty in its backup role, and I think that just further enhances the, the value of having this thing. It is a brand-specific purchase. We need to purchase a flight pump because the pump controls the plumbing. All of that is very specific to this pump, so there's only one bid. It's from Xylem Flight Products, $7,746.90, and recommend that be your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Bob on this? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve. I second the motion.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Hill, you've got next two, please.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have two items. The first one is for two, two, two six-inch TDW fittings. These are used for hot taps. That's cutting into a live gas line and not losing any gas there, so that you can do a pipe around it. A little bidder on this was S.J. Patterson Company at $8,074. This is a budgeted item.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item for you, Michael, please.
Okay. We have some parts here for our Transco Station and Brown Farm Regulator Station. What they are for is this, these meters that will meter the gas at the station, Transco, plus we'll also, we're going to be packing that pipe between there and the other meter, and we will move gas from there, and we'll be able to tell, tell how much we've moved out of that pipe after it's been packed. But this is sole provider. These, these two meters are $34,585 a nickel.
Okay.
And was a budgeted item.
Any questions for Michael on this item? If not, a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve purchase. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michael. Chief McCam.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a request for the council to authorize the mayor to sign the 2017, 2018 federal annual report, which documents how much money we received from the Department of Justice and how much we spent. I mean, if you want me to tell you how much we received and spent, I can do it.
I really, I don't, I don't need that. I just, I like this to sickness and that. Thank you very much, Chief.
Just keep it simple.
That was pretty simple. Any questions? You know, it's pretty obvious you don't want to answer any. Chair, we entertain a motion.
Motion to approve or report.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor to give us a saying aye. Thank you, Chief. On multiple levels. As, as I mentioned in the work session, I'll tell you, if you've got a copy of the, of the agenda, the resolution that we were going to pass, that's been removed from the agenda this evening. We'll move to the commendation and recognition item for Mr. Anderson, please. The item you're handling, not commending or recognizing.
We're not commending or recognizing. Yes, Mayor and Council, this is pertaining to the Leek Mounds, Etowah River Walk Link Trail that was completed in late spring. It's been in use over the summer. Of, of course, this was done with a DOT grant. We received $1.61 million in grant, in grant funding for this, so without that grant funding, we could not have done this trail. But also, we received the donation of Right-Away from the Cummings family for a part of this trail, and without this donation, we could not have done the trail. And, and related to our Parks Recreation Naming Rights, as approved by city council, I've received a letter from a private citizen, Ms. Diane Tate, and I have private funding for the, for the bronze plaque, and I'm requesting that Cardinal City Council approve the, the naming of the boardwalk right just past the new bus barn in name of Skip Cummings. I spoke to Ms. Cummings on this, and she wants it, you know, just something simple in, in honor of Skip Cummings and the date, which will be dedicated October the 4th, 2018, and I'm requesting that city council approve this.
Okay. And how much land did she, did they donate?
Well, I, I think I said around six acres, but I think that included part of the construction entrance when it was being constructed. I think it was somewhere in, in the four-acre range.
Generous donation regardless.
Very generous.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. You got a motion?
I'll second that motion.
And we got a second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We do have, yes, sir?
Well, I would like to say that I have placed invitations to Mayor and Council, and they've been mailed out to other dignitaries within the city, our state representatives and our federal, our US representative, DOT officials that was involved in this. And, and this will be October the 4th. This will be a Thursday before the October council meeting at 4:30 at the, the trailhead at, with the other end of the canoe kayak launch, and hope all city councils able to attend. We'll have some golf carts there, the ones that want to go over the trail afterwards. And I've got Mr. Tonsmyer, he's going to do, he's going to dedicate our trail, and anyway, it should be a, a, a good event. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.[1721.33] We do have a need to add an item to the agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to add that item at this time.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Item is added. Mr. Lovell.
Mayor, the city of Cardinalsville on August 27, 2018, received an anti-lighting notice from attorney by the name of Stephen M. Barnett concerning an individual named Jim Reeves who had a bicycle accident on a city sidewalk around middle of March of this year, asking, stating that he suffered injuries, and he wanted the city to be responsible for those. At this time, I am recommending pursuant to the state law, and based upon the information that we currently have, the city denies this claim, and then that by definition means their statute of limitations starts running, and they will either file lawsuit or settle with the insurance company or whatever they decide to do.
Okay. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. I'll second that motion.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business that needs to come before council this evening?
Mayor, I did just want to make one statement. When I was discussing the ordinances with respect to the credit card and processing fees, I was actually talking about two separate ordinances, just in case I did not make that clear to the public.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Any other business that needs to come before council tonight? If there's none, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Adjourn. Stay golden.